Madam Minority Leader, the only person that receives a pay raise is the mayor, and that's because of how the charter is written. If a Superior Court judge receives an increase by way of state statute than how our charter is written, since the mayor's salary is tied to that salary of a Superior Court judge, then the mayor automatically receives a pay raise. So I believe, right now, the mayor's salary is about one sixty or so, but that's because of the fact of what that base rate for a Superior Court judge. So he's the, well, that office is the only office that's tied to something after state. Ours is fixed. The only way that ours can increase is by way of a charter revision recommendation that we have to send along to the electorate for them to vote.
Right, and if I could just add to that, obviously, US Council and the Treasurer don't have the ability to collectively bargain your salaries and benefits like union members do, so obviously it has to be done in a venue like this, and the public has to comment on it, and you have to consider it, so I'd just like to add that.
Then I might add, I think, on the previous, the previous administration, there was a two percent pay raise given to non-union unclassified employees in the city, and if I, my research is correct, that did not, the Treasurer did not receive that because the Treasurer's salary is not tied to anything, so the Treasurer is an elected official, but anything that the mayor would impose as a pay rate for unclassified employees does not affect the Treasurer, or it also doesn't affect, if I remember correctly, the red straw holders either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Seeing none, okay, thank you, sir. Anyone speaking against this item? You're speaking against this item?
Yeah.
Come forward, please.
How's it going? So last year, I, last year, I addressed the City Council on AtomCloud in regards to technology that we have currently in place with many countries using it, including Venezuela. They're actually implementing blockchain technology. So AtomCloud probably gets paid over a hundred grand a year. We can literally work with UConn and a couple other colleges that have really good web developers to blockchain our ledger, city ledger, to make it public. I think that's definitely the route that we would want to kind of consider, and I can send you guys some plans in regards to that and for the next ordinance, but I think that's something that we should definitely consider to keep things open as far as government goes. Citizens, kind of, we request more transparency, right? And I think that's something that we should all, like, really look into as far as what this just technology and everything else goes. I didn't have a prepared speech for this, but I've seen a lot of comments online. I actually own a very large forum online for Hartford, and I've seen a lot of people talk about the AtomCloud situation, and I don't think that, in our situation that we have currently, that we can, we can spend more money when we don't have it. I just think that it's foolish. For the price of AtomCloud, we could hire two web developers from either UConn or Trinity College. One kid that I know works, he goes to school at Trinity College, he does Python protocol coding. That is, that is extreme, the stuff that they're doing. The stuff that they're working on looks better than our city website, and it's sad. These kids do it with no money. And the kid from UConn, he does Python protocol coding as well. I think that's the direction that we should take forth with the Treasurer and a lot of administrative duties as well, so that's it.
Thank you. For the record, can you state your name and your address?
Thomas Kenny, 183 Weathersfield Avenue.
Thank you. Anyone speaking in favor of this? Anyone speaking in favor?
Good evening, Council members. My name is Melly Arciniagas, and I live on 126 Yale Street in Hartford. I am here in favor of this ordinance. First, there should be equity in the pay for all department heads, males and females. Being a veteran, I understand firsthand what it is to serve. And I believe AtomCloud is a man that believes in his community, sacrifices, and serves at the best of his ability. I commend the Fire Chief for handling two jobs, which is not easy to do. However, it is imperative that he gets paid for his work, and the salary level should be like any other department heads, not less. I call this fairness. The other individual that I just mentioned has been overlooked for a long time due to politics, like some people are saying here, is the City Treasurer. We need to understand how critical and difficult his position is. It is not easy to bring the value of the MRF assets from nine hundred and forty million in 2014 to over one billion in 2018. The community retirees and employees appreciate his commitment and leadership in maintaining a strong pension fund. We have families out there. This is what they live on. And this man has done an impeccable job, and we need to note that as City Council members. I must say that the Treasurer has always invested his time in helping out in the community. When you see all these people come out for him, it's because he invests in his community. It's not because he just did this in one day. He invests in high school students, he wants them to learn and work, he wants them to understand about finances, which is very rare in Hartford. He does that on his own time. The Treasurer should not be overlooked this time, and should be treated fairly like the rest of the leaders in this city. I ask that each one of you put yourself in these two guys' shoes and do the right thing in setting up fair standards for them and for future leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. Anyone speaking against this item?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I, um...
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Rachel Calderon, Southern of Hartford. I am against this ordinance, and the reason that I am against is because the City of Hartford is going through almost bankruptcy. The City of Hartford is too sad to see what it's going through. The city is dirty, deplorable, nothing has been done, the roads are deplorable. We don't have any money, and everybody's asking for salary, salary. If you don't, if you cannot do the job, don't do it. I don't want to feel sorry for somebody who says, "I'm doing this," and you know why? And some people are getting double work, and then other people don't have any jobs. Why now? We are in crisis, and you have no money to start giving to some people, and other people are looking for jobs. They are grasping to eat, they don't have anything. The City of Hartford is broken right now. If you think you're doing too much, I'm sorry about that, but you need to start thinking about maybe volunteering or doing something else right now. And I'm not being unreasonable. Maybe ten years ago, I would say something different, but not right now. The City of Hartford is in a deplorable situation right now, and I am against to raise anyone because we don't have money.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone speaking in favor of this item? Anyone speaking in favor of this item? Anyone speaking in favor of this item? Anyone speaking against this item? Anyone speaking against this item?
Good evening. Sorry, good evening, Joanne Bauer, 25th, North Beacon, Hartford. So I'm wondering if I could just get a clarification about the item first? Is that possible?
What's your question?
So is, is the ordinance specifically about the people who are in the position right now, or is it about the positions?
It's about the position, not the person, the position.
Okay, thank you. So I basically agree with the person who spoke right before me. I think that the city is in the situation, as we know, a financially difficult situation, and so for that reason, I would speak against this ordinance. That's basically it. There are other things I could say about the persons, but since it's just about the position, that is how I strongly feel. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone speaking in favor of this? I'm sorry, any questions? Anyone speaking in favor of this item? Anyone speaking in favor of this item? Anyone speaking in favor of this item? Anyone speaking against this item? Anyone speaking against this item? Anyone speaking against this item? This item is closed. Moving on to our last and final item on our docket, Ordinance Amending Chapter Twenty-Nine, Article One, to Add Section Twenty-nine dash eighteen relating to the use of unmanned aerial vehicles by the Hartford Police Department of the Municipal Court introduced by the Minority Leader, would at least be muted. Anyone speaking in favor of this item? You may come forward.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Ivan Backer. I live at thirty-one Woodland Street in Hartford, and for twenty-five years, I served on the Human Relations Commission, which dealt with many public and police complaints. I became alarmed when I heard the City Police Department is planning to apply for a grant to purchase two drones. What would be the purpose of having drones in the police arsenal? The given reason is crowd control. This is really bogus. I have attended many demonstrations in my thirty-nine years of living in Hartford, and I find that no demonstration really exceeded more than about ten thousand people. The police has always managed such public gatherings with professional efficiency and a respect for the dignity of the demonstrators. So what would be the use of drones? Unless there were strict procedural regulations which adequately protected the privacy of individuals, the only reason left is that these drones would be used to snoop on the activities of individuals without a court-ordered search warrant. I urge you to stop the purchase of these drones and pass the ordinance to protect people from spying on our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone speaking against this item?
I'm against all the way, and you know why? Because we have so many criminal activities in Hartford, Connecticut. It's about time. It's about time they do that. As long as they only use the drones to catch criminal activities, I am all for it. It's about time, and I cannot understand how anybody not think about safety. Do you know how many criminals are there every day? We are scared to walk in Hartford. We are afraid, people are afraid, they want to move away, they can't take it anymore. Yes, this gentleman says that the police officer were acting professional, maybe a long time ago, not now. Crime status is really, really elevating. And you know who would want it to have? Who would want it to oppose lists like this? I would like to see your ATVs around your house in your block. Please have it in your block, not in mine. I almost got killed by one and hit in my car, and I don't want to see drug dealers around the corner. For criminal activities, I go all the way, not for private stuff. And I hope you guys think about it. It's all about safety. We're not safe anymore, and you know that. The police officers, yes, they did it a long time ago, but right now, the statistic is really high. I'm all against this, and you know what? I talked to a lot of people, and they are happy that they're going to use drones because they sick and tired of seeing so many crimes, so many drug dealers around the corner, and I don't know who wants to protect them. If you want to protect them, bring them around your block, around your neighborhood. We're tired of it. And this is how I feel, and I'm feeling for other people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone speaking in favor of this item? You may come forward. It's up to you, Melvin, if you want. Okay.
You have a list, don't you? We signed out.
I don't have the copy.
Oh, okay. Leslie Hammond, Gwendolyn Place, can you hear?
You can take the mic off of her.
Okay. I'm really glad that Councilwoman Bermudez did this ordinance. Perhaps I've seen too many movies, I mean, I've seen those drones, you know, killing people, and so that's where my mind goes. I know that we can really trust our Hartford police. I know the ATVs have been a huge problem. It's all we've talked about for the last two years, and it's really out of control, but I am very concerned about it going to a next level because they are so powerful, because they can do so much as far as, you know, spying on people, our rights as private citizens, and possibly ever having any kind of guns or explosions or anything like that, just scares the heck out of me. So maybe we're jumping ahead of the game, maybe this is, you know, just for the ATVs, and it's going to be done right, but I really think it's good to have something in writing and to have the oversight of a judge having to sign off on things when the police think there might be some person or persons that they want to investigate. We've got to all be very careful in these times as our rights are being eroded, and we might think it's only going to happen to the bad guys, but, you know, we could all become that bad guy. So we've really got to be mindful of how we handle something like this that can be incredibly intrusive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone speaking against this item?
I'm Tom McCormick, and this is kind of odd, because I guess I'm speaking for myself in this case, representing myself, because I have a federal committee to run for Congress, tomforcongress.org, and I guess I'm speaking for me. I haven't been down here in quite a while, lived a lot of different places, born and raised in Hartford. God, it was Atheson, God, a long time ago, down here. Remember Charlie King singing the song Acceptable Risk about the atomic veterans who were made human guinea pigs because they were marched into the bomb blasts? It was quite touching, and that dealt with an ordinance on bringing high-level nuclear waste through the city, and that's going to be happening again, so you might watch out for that. Soon as the stuff starts to hit the road, Hartford's in the bullseye. I speak against this ordinance or for it, just depends how you want to use the language, but I don't think, I don't want one penny of my eight thousand dollars about that I spend in property tax to go turn a drone to spy on people.
Are you...
It's real simple. The Fourth Amendment is under attack in this country by the fascists. We have sneak and peek.
Just for the record, are you for or against this?
I'm against the drones being in Hartford air.
This is for.
Yeah. No drones, none of my money, that's for sure. If I had a gun, I'd shoot one down if I saw it over my property. I don't know if a bow and arrow will do it, but we'll see. You know, our forefathers fought a revolution in this country for our freedom, and part of that freedom was written up in the Fourth Amendment against illegal searches. You cannot search a person's property without a warrant, and drone flights would be searching a person's property without a warrant. It's really pretty simple. You have federal agents demanding people's phones at airports to open them to see what's on their phones. Illegal, unconstitutional, but this is the backdrop, and this is what we're dealing with. We're dealing with sneak and peek entries by the police, no warrant, and this is kind of drip, drip, drip of taking our basic civil liberties away from us, and that's about it. Thank you.
Is there anyone that is here to speak against this item? Anyone here to speak against this item? Anyone here to speak in...
Could you please clarify for the record?
Yes.
If we're here to, this is all brand-new language, it's all underlying.
Yes.
So if we want to change some of this language, are we for or are we against? It's brand-new, so...
It's, it's up to you whether, which side you want to take, and then we'll listen, and then you are more than welcome to email us your suggestions.
Okay, all right.
Because let me, I'll just provide some clarity to this. It takes the opinion of the Corporation Council to make a decision as to any changes that are recommended, whether it constitutes a substantial change. If it constitutes a substantial change, then we would have to introduce a brand-new ordinance versus just amending certain language.
All right, then I'll start, all right, then I'll speak, and you can decide what I'm just saying.
So you're against this. This is for, this is against.
I'm for this, but with changes. I'll say.
Okay. Anyone that wants to speak against this? Anyone wants to speak in favor? Take the ACLU.
I'm waiting up here for this, all right. Okay, so my name is Melvin Medina, I'm a Hartford resident, three ninety Capital Ave, Director of Strategic Initiatives at the American Civil Liberties Union of Connecticut. I'm joined by my colleague Kaylee Lantini, who's Legislative Counsel for our organization, and I would like to thank the Council for the opportunity to testify in support of Councilwoman Bermudez's proposal that would establish practical guidelines on the use of drones by police. We need policies that protect our civil liberties from unjust surveillance, not promises from the police that wrongdoing will not occur. In light of recent developments related to the Hartford Mass Surveillance Center, it is imperative that the Council set proper safeguards to protect Hartford residents' basic rights. As the City Council members, you are empowered by state law as the primary oversight body that sets policy and practice for the Hartford Police Department. An internal policy, administrative policy can be one tool for taking control of, over police surveillance, however, it's not the avenue through which we should hold a public debate on the kind of city that we want to live in. I do not vote for my Chief of Police, I vote for you. As a resident of the city, I'm hoping that this Council will take its oversight and policymaking role seriously. There are members of the Hartford community here who share our concerns about the unintended consequences that mass dragnet surveillance can have on the people of the city, and we wonder, do you share our concern that the Police Department's surveillance data sharing agreements with federal agencies undermine this city's decade-long commitment to being a sanctuary city for the undocumented community? Do you share our concerns that blanketing the city with surveillance cameras and implementing facial recognition technology threatens a woman's right to private medical counsel if her movements can be tracked and retraced as she enters the door of a local reproductive health center? Do you share our concern that overpolicing the activities associated with poverty and addiction feed our community members into the criminal justice system instead of addressing their underlying needs? Do you share our concerns that LGBTQ youth who are experiencing homelessness may become the targets of surveillance at our public parks instead of getting the help that they need? Do you share our concern that activists organizing for the empowerment of Black and Brown communities will be labeled extremists whose movements and activities in this city become the focus of digital dossiers? We need policies that protect our civil liberties, not promises from the police that wrongdoing will not occur. Councilwoman Bermudez's proposed ordinance is an important first step in addressing these concerns. The ordinance would ban the weaponization of drones, mandate police, mandate public reporting from police about how they use drones, and require that all future applications for the acquisition of surveillance technology by the Police Department be published and made available to the City Council, and would require a vote for approval. These are common sense solutions. Importantly, this ordinance also sets clear guidelines for when police can use drones, specifically six allowances, when they have a warrant, when police have been given written consent by either a person or the property that they're targeting, when there are exigent circumstances such as an emergency search and rescue operations. And if I could finish, just to finish this last point, and it would also include the reconstruction and documenting of a specific crime or accident scene. We don't want to take away their tools, we just want to set common sense guidelines. We strongly believe these allowances strike the right balance, and we urge you to support the ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions? None? Thank you. Anyone that wants to speak in opposition of this ordinance may come forward.
My name is Eugene Siri, I'm on Fifth Hill Avenue in City Hartford. The reason I'm in opposition to this present ordinance is that I'm concerned about the restriction of the use of technology within the department to protect the police officers and to protect the people in the city of Hartford. There is no expectation of privacy when you're outside. There is a term used quite often under the Fourth Amendment, anything that's claimed you is up for grabs. The other concern I have in regards to this ordinance is that there's other departments within the city of Hartford that are presently looking at acquiring drones for using them for emergency purposes, and I want to make sure that they're not affected by this ordinance being presented by the Council. And the example here is that presently, the Hartford Fire Department is looking into acquiring a drone for the purpose of establishing search and rescue procedures, hazardous material investigation, looking into high-rise buildings during reports of structural fires for search and rescue. They don't fall under the same rules and regulations as the Police Department because of the type of work that they do, but I'm very concerned that this ordinance might have an effect in the future as to them being able to implement something of this nature for their safety and the safety of the personnel. I have here a copy of the Austin Fire Department's Standing Operating Procedure that's twelve pages long that addressed the use of drones. This could be handled internally with the Police Department too, and with establishing a standard operating procedure with the restrictions that are necessary to control the excessive use of any type of instrument like that. I'd like to leave this copy with the Council here, and if there's other, would like other copies, I could email them to you later on tomorrow or in another week. Thank you for letting me have my time.
Thank you. Any questions? Madam Minority Leader.
Thank you. My question has to do in terms of, you seem to be very knowledgeable, sir, in terms of, can you hear me? Yeah. Your name again, your last name?
I'm sorry, I'm a little hard to hear.
Your last name? Your last name?
My last name is Siri, C-I-E-R-I.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Yes, you seem to be very knowledgeable in terms of having looked at other states that have implemented, or other cities that have implemented drone use. And so, as it relates to the state of Connecticut, through your knowledge, do we, as a state, have something on the books as it relates to the use of drones?
As to answer for the state, I don't know. But I can tell you this. My son has his FAA license to fly drones. And it's very much regulated as to what they can do, when they can fly them, and for what purpose they're flying them. My biggest concern, and I understand the concerns of the people in the community about their privacy, is that if something's put into place and Avenue is left open for other departments that are non-police departments to have access to this type of equipment to perform their job better and safer for themselves and for the people of Hartford. That's my only concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Yes, I'm speaking in favor. Joanne Bauer, 25 North Beacon Street. So, first thing I want to say is ditto to the ACLU folks. They're so articulate that there's nothing I could add to their argument, but I think it's important that the Council take responsibility for oversight of the ways that these pieces of equipment come into our city. Let me back up a little bit further. I just want to say that I'm opposed to drones junking up the air, our skies, number one. I do not welcome the day when there are drones just everywhere in the sky. I don't, I think it's tragic that that's what kids would have to be looking up to instead of seeing a blue sky. But moving on from that, I remember being part of Occupy Hartford on the day that the encampment was broken up, and there were so many militarized-looking things going on there for really only 12 people on that site. I happened to be walking, I wasn't even on the site, but I saw all of the police cars and then decided to go towards the encampment rather than away from. And thank goodness I wasn't the arrested woman because, oh, I don't know, I get phobic in police vehicles. But besides that, those weapons, those weapons, we know that these weapons have come, these weapons have been passed down from the ones that are kind of overload for our military, and they come into our police departments. And once the police have them, they are challenged to use them. They're challenged in a number of directions to use them. And this concerns me greatly because it impacts on our civil liberties, of course. Now, in 2017, on the day of the Women's March, I was in Boston with 175,000 other women and families. I don't remember seeing drones over Boston, and that was a peaceful coming together. So, we talk about 10,000 people maybe in Hartford. In fact, on the way back on the subway, we saw all of the women around the globe marching, including the 10,000 in Hartford that Brian Foley was apparently taking photos of. Now, I don't know if that was, they were drone photos, maybe they were, or he was up in the Capitol Building, I'm not sure, but those are peaceful assemblages of citizens. And I think that we will be threatening activists, for sure, of which I am one, if we talk about drone surveillance. In addition to all of the things that Melvin Medina said, I absolutely think it's dangerous that the first people surveilled will be people of color. That's my concern, and I'm not one of them. And that is absolutely my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone here to speak against this?
Good evening, Luis Delgado, Wyndham Street. This ordinance is like a tricky thing, you know? It seems like there's an appearance on the surface that is for the people, but is actually against it because I don't think we should have drones. We're a small city, what do we need drones for? We have a small police department, and I'm totally against any type of surveillance that violates our rights, like the lady spoke before me. People of color are going to be the main people that are targeted by this. And I wish that the Council people, when you put things out like that, you would take things like that into consideration. And for the people that come here and talk about Hartford is bad, and there's crime and stuff like that, I suggest you move to somewhere where you feel safe. Because Hartford is a great city, we have history, we have great communities, we have the Mark Twain House, which is rich with history. We had a Black Panther Party chapter here, which is historical. We've had so many great things, and I wish the residents of Hartford will come up here and say some positive things about the city that we live in. And instead of talking nonsense about it all the time, come up here and tell us what you're doing to make it a better place. But I'm definitely against any type of surveillance that infringes on our civil rights, on our privacies, and all these other type of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone speaking in favor, you may come. Sorry.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilmembers. My name is Marilyn Pearson. I live at Two Brainerd Road in West Hartford, Connecticut. And I work for the Federal Aviation Administration. I was one of the principal members on the Rulemaking Committee for 14 CFR Part 107, that is unmanned aerial systems. I was on the rulemaking team for drones. So those of you, some of you may want to throw sticks at me, but we took into consideration 10,000 comments on drone usage when we did the regulations, the federal regulations. So I'm speaking in favor of this ordinance. I do have some concerns about the language, and that's what I'd like to address. The language in Item C is unclear. The federal rules do not allow the carriage of hazmat unless there is federal authorization through a certificate of authorization of COA. So it's unclear in Item C whether you are, you are not allowing law enforcement personnel in the line of duty to carry hazmat. Hazmat is also considered armaments or any other type of chemical warfare, any explosives. That's one of my concerns, is the language. So if it could be clarified, a thorough review by the FAA needs to be done before carriage, whether you are a public operation or an operator under Part 107. I'd also like to address some of the concerns. The ordinance here is not talking about spying, there are federal regulations that address privacy. There are many state agencies here in Connecticut that use drones for fire and police, for rescue, for safety. We've used them to identify hazardous areas in the most recent flooding. We have here amongst us the operator of Drone Ranger for NBC, who is safe and is used nationwide for his ability to assist. As far as the people who are addressing concerns about spying on people, again, there are federal regulations. If you're concerned about the operations of drones and that they're in the sky, they're illegal, we have agencies within the FAA that take care of that, in the same manner as if you were speeding, a police officer would stop you. So, the issue of spying, of privacy, those are all federal regulations, and they can be enforced through the FAA, they can be enforced through state and local ordinances. So my concern is not so much whether you should or you should not. These are valuable tools that are used in search and rescue, they're used in agriculture, they're now used in identifying bridge and other repairs that are necessary. We talk about the infrastructure in this state, and we can use drones to be much more accurate in identifying problems with bridges. We can do it safely without having people on roofs, hanging under bridges, going underwater. These are tools that are now in the 21st century, they're not going away. The legislation is in place to keep them safe. The fact that there are 1 million registered in the nation right now is problematic, it is hard to regulate a million people. There are people who are going to do things that are not approved of federally, locally, by state. We are trying to address that, but these are tools that the 21st century needs, and I applaud Hartford for the use. My concern also is the certification issues for the people who would use them. These are aircraft, the people using them need to be certificated as pilots. They need to operate either under Part 107 of the federal regulations, or as public entities, or as both. So those are issues that I think need to be addressed beyond what you have here. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Any questions? Council McGeele.
I don't know if you can answer this, but I would be interested, and I think all of the Council would be interested in written comments from the FAA. And so I don't know exactly how we would go about that request, if that's something that could be made through you, or if you could offline point us in the right direction in that regard. All of our emails are accessible, we'd love to have it.
I would take your emails, and I do work out of Washington DC, I live here, but I am attached to headquarters in DC, and my specialty is the rulemaking for drones. I can address this through my division and perhaps answer whatever questions you might have. I have a copy of the federal regulations with me, if you want me to leave those with you.
Thank you. Madam, I know a leader.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony. Just so that I'm clear, you mentioned, and you know, you had a chance to look at the ordinance as it's written, the draft that is presented before you, but you specifically cited the concern that you had was with Section C.
Yes. In Section C, it's unclear whether you are allowing officers to be equipping the drones with explosive detection, detonation, or disposal equipment. And it says, provided such law enforcement officers authorized by the federal or state government to detect, detonate, and dispose. We received requests for that. We have to date not allowed the carriage or the detonation of these hazardous materials. So, this is something that needs to be addressed federally, whether you are carrying it for the purpose of enforcement or not, but it is not a state-authorized item. It has to be a federally authorized area to carry hazardous materials on a drone. These are aircraft, and they are regulated federally.
Thank you. And through the Federal Aviation Committee and at the federal level, has there been, the same way that, you know, we received a copy of the Austin Fire Department that was provided to all of us here tonight, has there been any kind of similar policy that has been shared with those departments, police departments, fire departments at the state level? I shouldn't say just at the state level, for the entire state of Connecticut, just to make sure that, you know, they're in compliance?
Most of the state departments that are using drones, Westport, Ridgefield, Vernon, they're all in compliance with federal laws. To answer the question about state regulations, your state regulations cannot supersede the federal laws, except on the ground, where we don't allow operations of drones in parks or other public use areas. However, once they're airborne, this becomes a federal issue. The airways are the national airspace, not a state or local airspace.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that last part that you mentioned in reference to the parks?
So, in the state of Connecticut, as many states, operating drones from state parks is not allowed. Federal parks, all sorts of federal lands, each state does have ordinances that prohibit that use. However, it is restricted to the launch and landing. Once a drone is airborne, it becomes an issue for the federal government. They're in the federal airspace, not state or local property. Does that clarify it? You could overfly a park, but you can't land or take off from one.
And why is that specifically, the reasoning behind it? I just want clarification.
It's a safety issue primarily. Obviously, in state parks and areas like that, you have people enjoying the parks, children and adults, dogs. Operations of drones are limited to not operating over people, not going higher than 400 feet. They have to be operated with a visual observer and a licensed pilot. So, operating from some of the recreational areas would put you in jeopardy of violating a federal law. And it's a safety issue, of course.
Okay, so, since it is a safety issue, then by virtue of that, they cannot be operated in state parks?
Connecticut has that ordinance. Not all states do. It is up to the individual state to determine what properties drones can operate in. I'd also like to point out that Brainerd Airport here in the City of Hartford is really only about five-tenths of a mile from downtown. And the federal laws do not allow operations of drones within five miles of a towered airport without specific authorization. So, that along with many of the other federal regulations that we have, would limit the capability of the Hartford Police and probably would assail some of the concerns that the public has. They would have to have specific waivers or authorizations for many of the areas that they'd be operating within. Thank you very much.
Is anyone here to speak against this item?
Good evening, I'm Hiya Cynthiaani. I live in the south end of Hartford. I'm glad that young lady speak on the issue, because I had some real deep concerns. However, what I would ask you to do, Councilwoman Bermudez, is to go back to the table and sit down with your police officers, your fire department, or somebody from the aviation, and put something that is workable for everyone, okay? Drones are very important, but there needs to be stipulation in how it's been used. And you need to have that conversation with a few people to make it right, okay? It's not a matter of, oh, I want to put something down to prevent drone because we are going to interfere, or we're going to be in people's life. That's not what it's all about, that's not what it's supposed to be about. It does help in so many different ways. Because as the fireman said previously, if there's a fire, they're able to go and see where that's happening, alright? So we need to be able to, if the police need to see where these motorcycles are coming from, or where they're going, they need the opportunity to do that. Remember, we don't have enough police officer, councilmembers. We have not hired enough police officers to do their jobs. And every little thing that can help them do their jobs, I think it's important. So I'm asking you to go back to the table before any vote in this, and get all the proper information, so everyone have an understanding what we can and what we cannot use that drone for. And that would be the best thing. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone here to speak in favor?
Good evening. Alyssa Peterson, Grand Bute Terrace. I think all of us are confused here as to this ordinance, and I really would encourage you to take it back to the drawing board. I understand the intent. I applaud that you're trying to regulate it. But I really, I understand the concern about being within five miles of Brainerd. There are differences there, and we need to be respectful of those federal rules. So I think we need to learn about those and put that in there. I do support this, but with changes, big changes. And the changes are absolutely no weaponizing, number one. The paragraph in C is very disturbing to me. I do not support having drones at public gatherings unless, and I echo that, the police department have done a fine job over the years of policing public gatherings, unless there's someone really of danger, if they suspect someone is in the crowd, and I suspect they've gotten an arrest warrant or something to watch this dangerous person in the crowd. I really don't believe drones would help us at a rally of some sort. I'm not in support of asking a judge for an arrest warrant, I'm sorry, or a warrant. If, I think we're all getting used to a smaller police force, the reality of it, given our budget situation, and we're all facing how many drugs are in our neighborhood. I mean, a block away from me on Freeman Street, we had a major meth lab discovered, and they had to bring hazmat in once they discovered the meth lab. I mean, it was tremendous to me. How is a meth lab, this is not Hollywood, this is Hartford, on Freeman Street, that we have a drug lab in the middle of a neighborhood, and no one knew about that? And I think if you have, you know, if we have these drones that are watching our neighborhoods, all these drug exchanges, people pull up their car and they pull away, and if these drug dealers understood that there might be a drone flying around watching these dealings, we wouldn't have drug dealing in our neighborhoods. Specifically, these drones are no different than the fixed cameras we have on poles right now. They're just flying. We have cameras everywhere. I really am not opposed to cameras, because we have a serious problem in this city with drug activity, gun activity, dangerous ATVs in our neighborhood. So I would limit the activities of the drones for categories, drugs, guns, other kinds of weapons, ATVs, of that nature. And lastly, I really would like to get us better educated on the federal versus the state. This needs to go back to the drawing board. I'm in favor, Councilwoman Bermudas, of you trying to regulate it, I really am, but I don't want to regulate it too much, and I don't want to overstep our boundaries. There is a need for this. We have major problems in this city. We have a reduced police force, and I think they can be of support of public safety. And I think it's great to see everybody out here with different opinions, and we just need to respect those opinions and come up with policies that work for us. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone here to speak against this item? Anyone here to speak against this item? Anyone here to speak against this item? Anyone here to speak in favor of this item?
Hello, my name is Camille Kritzman. I'm here to testify on behalf of Connecticut Students for a Dream. I live here in Hartford, two thirty-nine Farmington Ave.
Hi, my name's Ashley. I live in the north end of Hartford.
Hi, my name is Noah Watson. I live in Hartford and currently enrolled in Isnato Community College.
Hi, my name is Mirica Dominguez, and I will be working for Make the Road Hartford. As someone who, oh, my bad, this is not working. All right. As someone who cares deeply about protecting immigrants from ICE digital deportation machines, I urge you to support this proposal to create rules for police drones used in Hartford, and to expand this ordinance to take control of other police surveillance devices. If the Hartford City Council does not create very clear rules of how city police collect, store, and share surveillance footage and information, Hartford's police surveillances could contribute to ICE's digital deportation machine and tear families apart.
Depending on which channels ICE, the FBI, and other federal agencies use to demand information from the Hartford Police Department, the city may not be able to stop ICE or other federal agencies from accessing drone or surveillance camera footage. The lack of rules to clarify how Hartford police will collect, store, and share the surveillance footage that they gather through drones or cameras also means that immigrant families are in the dark regarding how city police will treat requests for surveillance footage for the federal government, including ICE. This contributes to fear and distrust of the police, something that Hartford Sanctuary City Ordinance was supposed to help prevent. Vigilant, which is the company that stores license plate reader information for the Capital Region Police Chief Association, recently signed a contract to provide ICE with full access to its license plate reader database. This means that ICE could track undocumented people's locations just by searching Hartford's license plate reader scans. If the Hartford City Council doesn't pass an ordinance to take control of how the city collects, stores, and shares police surveillance, the city will be contributing to ICE's deportation machine and tearing immigrant families apart.
Immigrants are scared and under attack from the federal government. We need the city council to show that it stands with us by passing an expanded version of this ordinance to protect us from the unchecked surveillance. Immigrants are vital to Hartford. We are your family members, neighbors, friends, and coworkers. Recognizing this, Hartford adopted a Sanctuary City Ordinance. But if Hartford doesn't create rules for how police collect, store, or share surveillance footage, the city will undermine that promise to welcome all people.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Anyone here to speak against this item? Anyone here to speak against this item? Anyone here to speak against this item? Anyone here to speak in favor of this item? Anyone here to speak in favor of this item?
Hello again. Thomas Kenny, one eighty-three Weathersfield Avenue. I'm in favor of this ordinance. I prepared kind of like a quick little speech here, and I'll kind of touch on it. The primary function of police is easier when they're intimidating, because war is most destructive, is the most destructive application of government force. When governments need to increase intimidation effect of their police, they become militarized, adopting defashion tactics, advancing weaponry, and excessive force, and criminally irresponsible spending of the military. As the relevance of providing legitimate services decreases, the need to control populations through intimidation increases. The mechanics of police militarization are the same as general military spending. An imagined need is fulfilled by a contractor who is bribed as a politician. Police forces are somewhat accountable to their communities. So the pressure for militarization isn't local, but rather central authorities with large grants that people can be tricked into thinking they are paying for, they aren't paying for. We inherently fear the police because of the power they wield, yield, sorry, over regular citizens. Most police departments exhibit all their critical, all the critical elements of violent street gangs. They're territorial, violently enforce their monopolies, and have distinct identifying features. Police are feared in a way that are normal, that normal people are not, because they have arbitrary power, low accountability, and often behave violently without concern for others. When ordinary citizens commit violent crimes, they are often jailed without legal proceedings. When police commit violent crimes, they are often given a paid vacation while their employers investigate, and pretend to be concerned with the extent necessary to maintain their credibility. I wrote that sometime last week, when I saw that a bunch of stuff started popping up on Facebook. I'm a very tech savvy person, I mean, you should check out my apartment. And I don't get how, when I lived off of Park Street about a year and a half ago, before I decided to look into buying a house in the south end, that one thing I noticed over the years growing up around like Parkville and Frog Hollow, that along every single block, there's cameras everywhere, and it's happening throughout Hartford. It doesn't make sense that you guys can even, not you guys, the police cannot even stop drug dealers, people that I know, and I have distanced myself from, of course. But it just doesn't make any sense. Drones won't solve the problems. If we cannot, if police can't do their jobs, I will actually email you guys a proposal to create private zones where the citizens can create solutions for their own areas, or NRZs. But, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone speaking against this item? Anyone speaking against this item? Anyone speaking against this item?
Good evening, council people, councilmen, councilwoman, general public. I just want to say, I'm not really in opposition, and not yet in favor. I think what Councilwoman Bermudas is trying to accomplish here is something that we probably should have, but I'm in agreement that it should be something that is done in accordance with FAA regulations, just as the lady over there had mentioned, so that it's all fair and equal across the board. So I'm not really in opposition right now, and I'm somewhat in favor of it, but I think it just needs for everyone to cohesively come together and develop a ordinance that's going to be applied, and again, like I said, fair and equal across the board, and that, you know, people can just have if it's readily available, and it won't create any problems in the future. Because if you don't have anything, you could create a problem. If you have something that has substance in it, then I think that's a win-win for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone speaking in favor of this item?
Hello, my name is Mike Boucher, and I am for the ordinance. I'm actually against drones, but I believe that if they are going to be used, we definitely need to develop guidelines, and they need to be developed early on, so that there's no room for gray area that could be interpreted any differently. Let me give you a little background about myself. I'm a computer engineer. I do a little bit of computer programming as well, and I'm activist in my free time, I guess. What I would like to point out is, in areas across the country where maybe these regulations are not very tight, we've seen on a national scale, things happen, for instance, in Standing Rock in North Dakota, when the use of drones there, and their questionable use. A lot of people had believed there was very different tactics being used that were even being told to people, but that's a conversation for another day. My point being is that we need to develop some regulations and have some guidelines, otherwise it's not going to be, it's going to be interpreted to whoever wants to interpret it. And without those, we're based off of individual interpretation. So I don't think that's a healthy place to leave things, especially with people's rights involved, and mainly I'm concerned with things like warrantless surveillance with drones. I think that we do need a warrant, because just like any other surveillance, people have surveillance being done on their phones and any other types of material, we have warrants for those. And I think warrants for drone surveillance should be no different. It's an impediment of people's space, and you're surveying them for various information that you're gathering, and I think that that is something that needs to be in place. So yeah, I'm for the ordinance. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Anyone to speak in opposition? Anyone to speak in opposition? Anyone to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in favor? Saying none, this council public hearing meeting is now adjourned.